Good evening, everyone. I call the Monday, October 21st, 2019 work session of Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clark, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And I'll ask everybody if they'll turn their ringer off on their phones, please. With that, Dr. Patton.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The zoning ordinance project is moving closer to the creation of a draft replacement ordinance to be adopted by City Council. This process will incorporate the City Council and Planning Commission briefing, reviews, and public engagements. Also, additional code compatibility reviews required to complete the final zoning rewrite draft will have to take place. This evening, Deputy City Manager Bob Baldwin will present a working schedule that will provide the process roadmap to reach a final version suitable for processing through the mandatory public hearing process. The process includes opportunities for general public review and input, as well as by regular ordinance users to solicit feedback on the many changes and differences between the existing ordinances and the draft new ordinances. The presentation is entitled "Zoning Rewrite Development Update." City Council, at your request, during the August 12th, 2019, public work session, the City Clerk was asked to provide an overview to current usage and survey information from surrounding localities, also with recommendations on the said. The City Clerk, along with our Deputy City Manager Pace, who is in charge of communications, and also the City Attorney, Mr. Solomon Ashby, worked a partner on this effort. And the presentation will be made by City Attorney Solomon Ashby. And thirdly, tonight, Mr. James Wright, the city's chief engineer, will update you on three key ongoing projects. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good to get.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council. Yes, tonight, we'll give you the roadmap, hopefully to take us through to the end of the zoning ordinance rewrite project. I know we had, I think, our last joint meeting with the Planning Commission about three months ago or so. And so, tonight, we wanted to walk you through kind of the steps required for us to get to the end of the process. So, first purpose of tonight's briefing, obviously, we're going to do a progress update. What have we been working on? We'll talk about our timeframe to get to a completed public review draft. That's the part we'll talk to really elicit public input on it. And then, we're going to talk about some of our other user outreach, some of our internal reviews that we still need to do as we work our way to a final ordinance that we can go through the public hearing process, through the Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council for adoption. So, then, I'll walk down the schedule, and feel free to ask any questions. We'll start off, we do plan to a briefing for the Planning Commission, a meeting on November the 5th, give them an update similar to what you'll get tonight, kind of start to bring them along as we start to break down the ordinance for consideration. We will be working towards that target in the end-of-year date to have the draft done. And this is the draft of the revised ordinance, the rewritten ordinance, where we've taken all those various different pieces of the code and put them back into pieces of single ordinance. And then, by the 2nd of January, we'll start an initial public review period. Those are long documents, a lot of changes over what was there before. We are proposing an extended amount of public input for more than just that reason, but we'll start that public review process. We also want to do something, the ordinance users review. You know, one of the obvious limitations on the current ordinance, one of the problems we discovered is that when the last ordinance got put in place, it really hadn't been tested out to see how it would work in sort of in the real world. It was all in documents. So, we're trying to give ourselves an opportunity to go down to our regular users, people who are common and users of the zoning ordinance, they're regular, they understand what's in there, get feedback from them. And also, we are going to spend some of that time where we will go through that period of taking out the new ordinance, and when people come in the door, kind of go back and looking at how would the new ordinance regulate what they're bringing in compared to the way the current ordinance is doing that. So, that'll go on from January until the end of March. We're also going to use that period of time, obviously, we're going to be watching the General Assembly. One of the things that typically happens is we get General Assembly action during a session where the zoning ordinance has to be rewritten. I think we all are aware, we've got some zoning ordinance requirements. We did get into casinos, and we know the stuff with proffers. So, we're going to try to time the creation of the final document with the General Assembly. And I just wanted to back up on this one thing. I think you're aware, we've discussed this in some of our prior work sessions, that our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act program and our flood regulations are actually overlay districts. They sit on top of the zoning ordinance as the way they operate. And so, during that review period, we need to go back and actually look at those two chapters of City Code, that's Chapter 9.1 and 14.1, and see if we're having any negative effect or any modifications might have to happen to those ordinances based on the changes to the new ones. So, we'll do all of that concurrently as we're rolling through that stuff. And then, obviously, we find out what the General Assembly does, and we'll know after the end of March what modifications is to work into the new zoning ordinance. So, we don't have to go through this review one time instead of doing that and coming back the next month and starting to amend, adjust, adopt the ordinance, which we're trying to avoid right off the bat. During that period, after the General Assembly session, we'll take the next month, we'll incorporate any comments we receive from the public, from our users, from our internal assessment, anything from the General Assembly action. We will complete a final, what I will call the final draft. Also, during that period of time, we have to start putting together our public notification process to advise all the members of the public of the new ordinance is available, that we're going to be going through public hearing process. Part of this in the D-2 district, we're going to have to do a map amendment for that new, for the new zoning in the D-2 districts. So, we'll do all the public notification for that. And May the 5th, we will do a final briefing for the Planning Commission after we've finished doing all the notification piece and the schedule intended to get to the Planning Commission for their public hearing on June the 2nd and the City Council in July. And that's really the working schedule we have to take us from the draft at the end of the year to adoption, hopefully by July, with all of those, all that time in there. Again, I just mentioned, this is a lot of changes of the ordinance, and we want to be very careful about checking back to make sure we haven't got too many unintended consequences. I mean, we're obviously going to assume that maybe things could happen here that are, might be a little bit disconnected. We're hoping not, we're trying to limit those to the greatest extent possible. So, we believe with this process, we put together, working with our consultants. Mentioned a couple of things we have to do during this timeframe, they're not listed on this chart. We have to rewrite all of our applications because the applications will change based on new processes and terminology that will come out of the code. You're also aware, one of these we're doing because of the Muni code situation, we're removing a lot of the graphics and diagrams out of the zoning ordinance. We're working with our consultant to develop a user's guide, and that won't be completed right at the same time, but that is what we'll be kicking off with them in a more extensive way in January, once we have a final draft of the ordinance. So, we will have both, be working both on the user's guide, which will show you those graphics, what the ordinance is describing. And again, we'll have to redo all of our application processes because there are new application processes created by the new code that aren't in existence today. For example, we'll have multiple types of site plan processes instead of one. We'll have more special exceptions than we typically go through today, for example. So, that'll all be going on concurrently. So, when we get to the point where we're ready to roll this thing out, we'll have the full package ready to go into use once we get to the summer.
Questions?
I have a question. We had an incident come, incident, that's a, I'll find a better term. We had an application come before us from the Perr properties.
Mm-hmm.
At the foot of the Jordan Bridge, and it was, to refresh everybody's memory, there was a condition that we required landscaping, and EPA had final say over that strip of land, and they said, no. We need to have some type of severability clause in our conditional use permit process, much like contracts, where the language goes, something like if a court of competent jurisdiction finds any portion of the contract to be invalid, it doesn't affect the balance of the contract. We need some.
Wouldn't have to go back.
Yeah. And that was one of those cases, you know, just to remind how we got in that whole situation, you have, you had a requirement, have a requirement in the zoning code that they could not, didn't make any sense. And so, it was replaced with a condition in the use permit, which they ultimately could not stall. And so, we all got kind of trapped between both versions, and I think that's a good point. We'll have to look at some of those. We do have some language we use in use permits, you know, if there's other regulatory requirements that can't be met, there's some adjustments you can make. For example, you know, from a conceptual site plan to a final site plan, but that was one where there's a specific condition imposed by City Council at the staff level, we don't take a lot of, that'd be very flexible. Council said that's what it is, and so, we'll look at that. One of the things we're hoping to do is fix the landscaping section, though we won't need to do a lot of modifications to it. That kind of substitution through a use permit, we're going to try to avoid. We just want to have, you know, the standard zoning, and then you can appeal that in other ways and go through all of that. And it'll be obviously faster than four months of.
Let me work it out to you after I make one more follow-up. If there could be some overarching provision that says if and when council imposes a condition in a conditional use permit that is found to be unimplementable, how about that for a word? Because of.
I know exactly what you mean.
Feds or state. And that particular condition is all in void, but it does not impact the rest of the combination.
And we would be glad to work with the City Attorney's Office on some of that. We do have to happen on occasion as well, where we have standards that become in conflict with other, like a state code requirement or something, we have that. But we'll have to work with the Attorney's Office. So, we've went through that, for example, with our sign regulations after the Supreme Court case, where we had to modify what we were doing, not based on counsel ending the code, based on the fact that what we had, our code was no longer considered legal.
Bringing up that PER property reminded me, I think I recall that the word port was nowhere in our zoning regulations.
We have not lost sight of that. I just mentioned to you something you may not be aware of along that same line that followed up behind us and has us a little bit leery of this. The state followed up under our Chesapeake Bay section, and basically said, if you have a port, they're exempt under Chesapeake Bay regulations. Of course, they were, at the time, looking to exempt the VIG property from under Chesapeake Bay. And so, they gave themselves a big global exemption if it's called a port. So, we have to be looking, we are working on that port definition, but not trying to be too global in it, because they took a very global.
Every backyard.
And once a pool will be a pool, if anybody says have a port. But we have not lost sight of that.
Yeah.
Shannon's first.
Mr. Baldwin, I know we've had numerous conversations about this zoning ordinance, and I appreciate the fact that you all are approaching this with deliberate speed and getting it done the right way the first time. My question is, I know when we have had discussions, you had indicated to me that this is council's ordinance, pretty much, and it's a living document. So, are we going to be able to make it easier to do things in our city based on this new ordinance?
All right, well, I'm going to, I'll describe it this way. We have had a initial conversation with council from the very beginning, what our goal was. Well, it was to simplify, streamline, and be more user-friendly. And so, a lot of the processes that got built into our ordinance are going to be stripped out. Now, you may find over time, you might want to put some back in. As we start using, you might find there are things you don't like, but we've had conversations with council, for example, on the use table. We went through that in some, at some length. We talked about taking use permit requirements away. Those will be shown as gone. We'll take all those distance separators, we talked about, we had all those 500-foot separation distance and 200, those will all be stripped out. So, yes, it should be. The question is, if we got the right balance in there for, you know, once you do that. But yes, it will definitely be easier to use if it's one document. It's not nearly going to be as voluminous as what we're working with today, and it'll definitely streamline a lot of these development requirements. We'd already done some of that. We still continue to work on this, for example, in the parking and the signs, even though we just did those. We're going back into those again, trying to be a little bit even more simplified in the way we're describing these. We're trying to avoid using too much legal language where we don't have to. Sure. To be a little more English. So, we think we've done a lot of that. And we have, we are putting in some processes in there for some of these special exceptions, so people will have an avenue for relief as opposed to having to go through four months to get to City Council for some of these things that are just minor. And so, we think we have, we'll have accomplished, you know, most of that. Again, I think we'll have to monitor over time, and against a living document, council can always come back and say, wait a minute, we don't like what's going on there, we want to modify the standard, or we want to make that use change, and you always have the ability to go back. Because I said that, it's very true, once it's adopted, we treat this as your ordinance, and we enforce it that way. And so, staff doesn't take a lot of lenience to things that says so in the code, and you've adopted it. We say that's what City Council has told us to go do.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa.
Yeah, Mr. Baldwin, I can appreciate where you are. I've been on this road with you for about three years as one of the liaisons to the Planning Commission, so I applaud you and your staff for how far you've come. And looking at the schedule that we have here with the City Council's public hearing, that's going to be our public hearing, and I know that Planning Commission will have some hearings on it as well.
That's correct.
Some of the comments that will come from citizens, I mean, this is not for us to go back to a drawing table and to redo anything, it's to hear their concerns on it, and then we come before we adopt the ordinance.
That's right. And what we intend to do, work with Dr. Patton, we presume we'll be coming back in front of council during that timeframe. I just didn't put a date to them.
Yeah.
We presume we'll come back in front of council if we have any modifications. If we get, especially we get closer to going to the final production, we'll probably go over a lot of the public input we've received and get some feedback to help us accelerate to a final.
Right.
But yes, we're definitely going to not start over. We don't want to do that again.
No.
I think this has been enough. So, I think the schedule there is a workable schedule. We do have things as tentative, and that's the reason I list those as tentative, because if we do get some massive comments back of something we've missed somewhere, we just weren't aware of it, we want to make sure we take the time to fix it.
Right.
Not that I would take, you know, months and months on end. We don't want to have a big gap. What makes us do is come back and we'll start amending the code the month after you adopt, and I don't want to be that quickly going into amendments. We're trying to get it as right as we can when we start.
And then, Mayor and I attended the Hampton Roads Realtors Association last week, and we met a gentleman, I forgot where he was from, but he's a realtor developer, and he brought to our attention that, you know, other cities, just like Councilman Glover just mentioned, that their process is much smoother, and some of the realtors and developers are, you know, a little hesitant to come here because our process is so long. So, I'm glad to hear that some of those processes are going to be streamlined. I think that Deborah, he may have gotten your information because he wanted to be able to present to us, to council, some of the issues that developers are having or realtors when they come to Portsmouth, some of the roadblocks or, you know, the red tape that they encounter. So, hopefully, somewhere in this scheduling timeframe, he will be able to come and speak to us before we get to a public hearing process.
Next.
Well, in the developer community, time is money, and to Councilwoman Burke's point, and hopefully, this will change it, but how are we going to communicate that to the development community?
That's what I was going to add.
Yeah, well, as we move towards the end, we'll obviously be putting out information about what the new processes are. That's part of putting those new applications together. Again, I've just mentioned, right now, you have one single, well, we have one actually identified site plan process, and then when we sort of, you know, develop ad hoc, because we need one, we'll have three different processes in there, from very simple sort of processes in there. So, we will definitely, we'll be doing more outreach, our notification process, any group out there that would want to, you know, have, where we'll put this out online. We'll make ourselves available to sit down with whoever wants to go through it and raise any questions they have.
I just think that our reputation has been so bad as far as the timeliness of being able to get a project.
Through.
From the groundbreaking to the completion, that we need to be more proactive, and it's no secret who the major developers are in our community. I think we need to reach out to them with this executive brief on our zoning changes.
And that's the users group I was mentioning. We have a process in there to talk to the regular users who have issues and concerns. I can tell you, back in the 2010, one of those users actually put together about five pages of recommendations in there, and they weren't.
Adhered.
Adhere to or incorporated. We're going to go out and do that and process it when people give us comments, we want to take a good, hard look at it, because this is not, there's not magic to this, you know, we're trying to get this thing to work. And, you know, when I say work, it's got to be balanced, and that's the one thing we have to do. It's got to be a balance of developer interest and citizen interest. We all know that fine line we work on with community interest and the developer interest. But our processes have to be plain and clear and straightforward, and speaking, spoken to people in the language you understand what we're talking about. And we're trying to get out of that, you know, where the processes are so complicated, even we have a hard time sometimes explaining all the steps you have to go through. I will mention, there's a lot standing here. We do have a lot, as you can imagine, depending on where you are, things people can run into, whether it's you're in a historic district, or you're in a flood zone, or you're in the Chesapeake Bay area, you're in a non-conforming lot, there's a whole bunch of things that can happen to people that will slow you down. Our goal is to try to internally try to work to smooth those out so those things happen faster, that they're not getting identified. One of the problems we've had, I'll be real frank about it, identifying problems one at a time instead of all at once. So, if somebody comes in, we go, oh, you're in a Chesapeake Bay area, you need to go talk to the Chesapeake Bay folks. And then, after you do that, they come, they go, oh, you need to subdivide your property, you need to go talk to the subdivision staff. And so, we're trying to get that where we have that. It is one of the places on the planning side we've looked at, we need to have a, you know, much more robust front-end review, and we're doing that pretty well now, where we capture those things up front instead of sequentially, if that makes sense. We've had a few people been caught in a sequential permitting process. They don't think they can ever get to the end. As soon as they get through one step, oh, by the way, you know, there's some, in fact, we had some people who've been caught in code change going through some of that as well. So, we're well aware of that, of that issue. We're trying to, hopefully, the ordinance will be easy enough to work through that people will know upfront what they need to do.
Dr. Patton.
Yeah, Mr. Moody, you hit upon exactly what I was going to ask Mr. Baldwin to kind of elaborate upon. And looking at that April 1 through May 1, everybody who we can think of, who is a contractor, a developer, or anything that would have anything to do with code or any kind of project, we want to be able to put out information and have some sessions in the evenings that they can come in and hear, enough that no one will be able to say, I didn't know the city's code changed, it changed, nobody knew about it. So, with this, we've got opportunity in here that everybody from north, south, east, or west, or anywhere around will know that the city has a, will have a new zoning rewrite. In addition, from what I gather, from what we are working to put to rest and create a new, we would have to go to four or five books, a look over here, or try to search or find. We're narrowing it, as it says, down to a comprehensive book with the components being spelled out, where it will be clear how to get from A to Z done of what you want to do. And I said to Mr. Baldwin that this zoning rewrite, this city should not have to rewrite its zoning ordinances in the next 10 to 15 to 20 years. He said, no, they shouldn't, Dr. Patton, but every year when the state makes whatever amendments or changes, Mr. Ashby agreed, then that's when they will go back and make those changes. But we shouldn't have to have a rewrite anytime soon with this streamlining, some efficiency, and looking at everything we are to do.
And I could just mention two other things. One, we have to do staff training.
Yes.
Don't forget our staff who has to.
Know them.
Is new to them as well, so we have to do that. I think that's a really kind of a critical element that gets lost in this. We have a number of users that are internal, and all the internal users need to have that process done. And I do think, well, one of the things we will propose to you right now, we're going to start doing, is we're going to do an annual assessment. So, every year, we'll take a look at, okay, because internally, we get, we get feedback from different, you know, internal users, from the zoning administrator to whoever else in the city, developers, and we can capture all of that and then go back, and every year when we do the General Assembly update, make any minor modifications, right, need to address any of those issues, so these things won't drag on or get, or be unanswered for years on that. So, that's part of, I think we just need to get in a habit, you know, of having an annual assessment of the zoning ordinance and then fixing what we need to.
All right, Bill, and then Paul.
With the adoption not scheduled until next summer, how is a developer that's coming to the fourth floor today, what are they being faced with?
Well, they're still dealing with, you know, what's in the existing ordinance now. I think we're much better now to explain to them kind of what they're, you know, what they're dealing with. And we do make people aware, you know, if you're not in a rush, if you had a project that you're just thinking about, and we've done this on a couple of occasions, sit down, people say, let me tell you what it's going to look like, you know, when the new ordinance gets done. So, you know, because in some cases, you know, the people, they come to our offices and they're talking well in advance of construction. We make them aware, the rules are going to change. So, that's the only, we have to make sure people also understand, if you adopt this ordinance on, by the end of July, the guy walks in the next day, can't be using that old ordinance, we wouldn't have, just like we did with the small lot patch, there's going to be a line that gets put in there, says you can't use the old code now. There'll probably be people out there that might have worked better for them, I don't know. And they're going to say, wait a minute, and I've built my whole project based off of, you know, the old. So, we have to worry to some degree about making sure people are aware that the new ordinance is being drafted, and that's why we have all this information available early. That's why we want to back up this timeframe, so people in their planning phase can see, here's what it's going to look like for you.
So, we'd be able to explain what those changes are going to be?
Exactly. And that's why we wanted to start that process in January, so they walked in the door, we'd say, well, if you show up with a plan tomorrow, it's got to meet, you know, the current code, but if you, you know, when this thing gets to the end, these are the changes you'd be looking at. Some cases may be something as simple as you need a use permit right now to you don't need a use permit right now. And that might be enough for somebody to go, I'll take, I'll sit back on that one for a little bit and wait to become a by right use as opposed to being a use permit use. We may have the same thing where people have distance separation requirements that are, that are in there. We keep finding that they're in this code all over the place, and so, when they all go away, same thing, that's a trip to the board of zoning people you might not have to make when we do that. So, we do try to explain to people what the changes are. And again, most of them have been, again, that's why we spend so much time with council, getting your philosophy, what you want built into this code. We're trying to build it the way you were describing what you want, how you want it to work.
Shannon has it. Paul.
How are we emphatically staying away from legal blowback?
Well, people always have the right to challenge legally, but we will follow every process required, notification, awareness, all of those things, and make sure that we follow the state code implicitly on how council will adopt it, and that will include all of those legal issues. So, the goal is, we do all those steps properly, but even if somebody would want to come in and challenge it, if you show them you've complied with all the required notification steps and all of those things, that we will have adopted it legally and properly. And that, so nothing takes a little bit of time, we're going to build that notification process correctly to make sure everyone that needs to be notified is notified.
Mr. Baldwin, do we still have the process in place whereas a developer A comes in and says they, they're anticipating doing a project here in our city, where you and your team meet with developer and bring all the other departments in to kind of have a strategic discussion on what's going to happen?
Yes, we do. We have a development review committee. They're on the scheduled meet every week, standing, standing meeting dates. We typically use that for, once people kind of come in, a lot of developers like to come in and kind of.
Sure.
Take their time, you know, they don't have everything ready for the first meeting, but once they get in that process, they want to have everybody in the room at once, so they can get comments from Public Utilities, from Engineering, from Planning, all in one time. So, we have that meeting. That is a standing meeting. The only requirement for them is they have something they want us to review, they need to give it to us a week in advance, so we can disseminate it to the reviewers, so we can have a meaningful discussion on their specifics. But that meeting, that meeting is scheduled every week.
How's that process work?
Works very well. In fact, we're getting ready to expand it to Chesapeake Bay issues that we're starting to get into. Now that the planning department and the engineering department are sharing Chesapeake Bay process, we realize that we need to have some meeting where we can all sit together and talk about and how we interpret certain requirements that have a kind of a blended Chesapeake Bay stormwater management, land use piece to it. And so we're expanding the use of that, of that group for that, because it's one place you get all the technical reviewers in the room at one time.
Right, good.
Um, members of council, Mr. Ashby just noted an important point, that we have a lot of small contractors, and this timeframe, April through May, is a very busy season for them through the weekend. We may have to have some Sunday sessions in the evening, that they aren't really, you know, working on Sundays, and they could come in and be aware of this. But we want to make the time where we can get those persons in who definitely need to know in advance how we're moving. So I thought that was a good piece to note.
Okay. Other questions? None, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Baldwin. All right, at this, at this time, Mr. Attorney Ashby will come forth with the chamber, city council chamber usage presentation and discussion.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, as Dr. Patton has mentioned, at your request, the city clerk, David White, Deputy City Manager, LaVoyce Pace, and I convened in order to determine cities' past practice with regard to the use of the city council chamber best practices, and to discuss some of the ramifications that are built into that discussion and the determination. And ultimately, we provide you all a proposed policy for the city council chamber. The policy, of course, is a result of your request for feedback, both on the availability of the chamber and the use of equipment within, in the chamber. So as part of that, what we're talking about this evening is the third-party utilization of city council chambers and the equipment associated therein. As I said before, the city council chamber is first and foremost a facility that's set forth in the city code, and it has a particular purpose, and that's why I provide the section in two, uh, section 2 hyphen 56 of the city code. I know many of you are aware, but your regular meetings and it is anticipated that all of your meetings will be held in the city council chamber unless and until we provide a different notice. So I wanna make sure you're aware that this is a facility designated by city ordinance. When we talk about city facilities, from a practical and a legal point, the city council chambers are facility with a particular purpose, and I showed you the code section that speaks to that. From a legal standpoint, and the reason I'm probably giving this presentation, one of the reasons is more often than not, when you get into discussion of city council chambers, and where we did the survey with other cities, the first, each person in the city sent us to the city attorney first and foremost. And that's because of the legal impact that the city council chamber has as a, what we talk about as a public forum, or a facility which could be designated as an open forum. So first and foremost, city council chambers are facility with a specific limited purpose set forth in the ordinance I, I mentioned earlier. Just like city hall, many of the offices here have particular purposes. So they're not, although we serve the people in these facilities, they have a function and there's a need that is fulfilled within each end and corner of the city hall. And so first and foremost, we have to recognize that purpose and make sure that the facility is available for that particular purpose. When we get to talking about the public access channels as well as the equipment we use for broadcasting, in many respects, that should also be treated as a forum, and under current law and operation, it's a limited forum. Our public, what you call a PEG channel, our government TV channel, is utilized to promote and provide city-sponsored activities, meetings. This meeting here today, we really do not provide what we would call, in some respects, public access. And that is a, a point that needs to be made with regard to both the chamber and the equipment that we utilize, both here and in the chamber, in this conference room and in the chamber. If we were to open our public government, our government access channel to the public, we then invite a number of other different laws and requirements in terms of access to the public. Essentially, we would be changing, in some respects, a limited forum into an open forum. And once you kind of cross that line, you have a number of different things you have to be able to track and respond to in terms of providing access to individuals. More often than not, when you provide that public access, the major concern is if those communications are political, party-affiliated, or along that line, you then have to proceed to balance those issues amongst the entire community. And it, these are the considerations that have been in the forefront of the operation and the access to the council chamber up until this point. Council chamber. When we talk about limited forms, let me give you a little bit of the law as it relates to limited form, and you'll be familiar with this, 'cause we have this discussion all the time with regard to folks speaking either on the street, in the city, or speaking before you as a council. As I've told you in other contexts, the US Supreme Court recognizes the city council meeting as a limited or designated forum, a non-for, a non-form that the city has opened up for use by the limited class of speakers for discussion of specific topics. And so, as we've had this discussion many times before, although we have a open, non-agenda speaker section to the city council meeting, really it is your meeting and your chamber for the purpose of gaining information you need to conduct your business. So it really is not, for lack of a better word, a public hall for rent. It is your hall, to the extent it fits that public purpose. And so the law says, goes on and says, when the state establishes a limited public forum, it's not required and does not have to allow all persons to engage in every type of speech. The state may be justified in reserving that forum for certain groups or certain topics and discussions. And so while this discusses a council meeting being conducted, again, this same analysis is applied to the city hall as a building. It would be applied to the sidewalk if there was a demonstration or some display of free speech, someone who might decide to have a demonstration in this hallway. All of the, the analysis is pretty much the same across the board in this facility. In order to bring the information back to you, we polled the cities and the localities here in the area, and we got some very interesting comments, but pretty, pretty consistent in terms of how other cities deal with their city council chambers. Many of them, like the first one, we don't record or air any political communication of any sort. We follow strict FCC and state guidelines pertaining to political content. We do not allow our, our council chambers to be used for this purpose. The only exception is when the mayor makes a video proclamation. Second also speaks to, again, the, the two sort of parallel issues. The utilization of a council chambers and recording or broadcasting in that council chambers brings your FCC license into some question, if you were allowed to do that. And I think what you'll see in the written format is across the board in all the cities, they pretty much keep it very close to council meetings and some broad civic needs that are generally determined, I think, across the board by the clerk's office or some other ramification, such that we don't get into an issue of having, it's kind of like they say, if you, if you let the camel get his nose under the tent, then the rest of it's gonna come behind it. So one of the reasons that we put these statements out here is so that you can appreciate, from a practical standpoint and a staff standpoint, the concerns that each locality has in terms of what issues they have a concern about. But, but they're pretty consistent across the board, but we wanted to give them to you unsanitized as possible. However, I'd be the first one to say, as the city attorney, this isn't the precise statement of the council, this is the administration's statements as it relates to that. And so that's why I didn't necessarily attribute names to each one, because we're talking about operationally how this is being done in, in each city. Any questions thus far? So I, I think this, this particular one is the one that sort of, I think, completes the statement. We would never allow, and, and when we discussed this with them, we talked about having third-party campaign sort of stops within the city council chambers. And so the also, there also was a question about recording and broadcasting it subsequently, utilizing the city's equipment. And one thing Mr. Pace came, provided to us, this discussion is not unique to this particular body. The communication department has had a policy directive on their behalf that goes back several administrations on this particular issue. Because again, a good bit of it is both the legal, from the form standpoint, as well as the broadcasting issues that can be created if we start producing or even giving access to what we call the general public on our governmental channel. My recollection, I can recall in one of my prior lives, there was some discussion of that before, and it was just a community person that wanted some time on the channel. But there again, the discussion was, if you, if you give A person 15 minutes, B person wants 15 minutes, C, D, E, F, G, and that becomes an issue of management time, resources, and whatnot. And so I think with the exception of the public access, and Mr. Pace can speak to that, with the exception of the public access or community programs we put on, from a city standpoint, we do shy away from what I would call third-party input on that.
Bill. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I can wait till the end of the
Okay.
...presentation.
Uh, let me just add one, uh, so with that information and that feedback from the localities in the area, staff got together and put together this proposed policy. And it states, "The Portsmouth City Council Chamber shall remain a limited forum available for the public good so long as the facility is readily available and such use does not impair the operation of the city by the appearance of partisan participation and the need to provide equal and opposing viewpoints or access. The city ca, the city of Portsmouth will not utilize its video facilities at the request of third parties. The city clerk, in consultation with the city manager and the city attorney, will monitor third-party requests to utilize city council chamber to ensure that the aforementioned guidelines are adhered to." And the one piece I would say to you is, uh, essential to that is, again, this need when we provide it, of creating that situation where it may blossom or multiply the requests and the need to organize and/or manage multiple requests. And Mr. Pace can speak to the earlier versions and discussions, because it's not only a matter of the utilization of the facility, but as he appropriately put in a memo several years ago, it's the acceptance of money from the group that would want to use the facility for that purpose also. So that, that creates a conundrum from our cable standpoint. It's not simply the, the access, but also the money. Mr. Pace, if you could just speak to that particular point.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
In the directive that we wrote back in 2010 relative to use of PCTV, one of the things that we tried to do is not compromise the integrity of the channel. PEG fee, we get funds from organizations that give us PEG fee money, and we, we did not wanna compromise that by allowing the station to seem as though it's endorsing one candidate or a political party over the other. And here recently, we've gone back and checked, looked at all of our franchise agreements and tried to review everything that we have. And basically, in the, in the agreement, it tells people, it tells you that if someone wants to use a channel for advertising or promoting something that's partisan, first of all, they're supposed to go to the state corporation, I mean, not the state corporate, the FCC, we were talking about state corporation commissions, they're supposed to go to the FCC first, then to the cable channel, and then ultimately to us, provided that, that they get permission from the two sources before they come to us. But the problem that we have with that is that sometimes they, there have been several situations whereby they have approached the channel about advertising, and I think that's why we did the directive way back. Mr. Chandler at that time did not let me know who had approached, but we checked with the FCC. And one of the things that they said is that you don't wanna compromise your channel. Here recently, we just found out that, from Mr. Jones, that they are starting to limit the PEG fee money that we get to keep up the channel. So I don't know what, ultimately what the reason is for that, however, they're, they're gonna be giving us less money than what they were giving us before. And I just assumed that if you continue to, to nibble at that piece, it could be a situation whereby they say, "Okay, now that you violated this situation, if you wanna pay a channel, you may have to end up paying for it." So we just tried to make sure that we are protecting the integrity of your council meeting so that they would appear on the channel as we've always done.
Good. Ted, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Go back to the very first page. A regular and special meeting in the city council should be held in, in the council chamber. Let's call for a special meeting. It seems like this would prevent a candidate form, is that, is that true?
I, I think, I think that presents a problem.
That's what it is.
I think that, that would present a problem.
And also prevent the selection of a candidate. And the reason why I'm mentioning that, we, we've had candidate announcements, we've had, we've had political parties select candidates in, in the chamber. So there's been a lot of political events in the chamber through the years, so that this, in effect, is a change. The other thing on the airways, yeah, I can, I can see that part more so, but even with that, it's not a, an election cycle that's been held where we haven't had someone running for office announce their candidacy from the dais in, in the council chambers. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that goes out on, on the public airways.
It, it, it does. And, and, and let me, let me add this one, and, and the reason you see the policy saying the need to create what I call a proliferation of issues, as I understand it, past practice has been, and although city council is not partisan positions, party positions, let's put it that way. You all have had meetings where folks have met you in the council chambers, and that's a city function. They're meeting with you for that particular purpose. Once you get past, let's say for the city, from, from my perspective, once you get past, Republican Party had a meeting, Democratic Party had a meeting, then you're going, that's when you're gonna go down a slippery slope of, let me give you an example, at the University of Wisconsin, when I was there. When I was at the University of Wisconsin, it took three students to form a student organization. And the reason I raise that is because I know three guys that got together and registered as a student organization, because you could then grab as a student organization, because you could then grab, you could then order cocoa at the cafeteria and go into a school building and sell cocoa for the purpose of fundraising. And so, three guys got together, they were a student organization, they sold the cocoa in winter, and, I'm not using names, so I can say this, and they sponsored the keg they put on the balcony through the summer. So, I say that to say, we certainly recognize that the clerk's office has essentially been the marshal of that facility. And I think if you go anywhere beyond where you have been traditionally, that's where your problem's going to come up. You're right, you know, folks make comments and statements from the dais and that sort of thing. But I don't think it's that proliferation, it won't raise that level in the eye of the FCC where you might be putting your channel and other things in jeopardy, if you break down beyond where that has typically been.
Well, perhaps, but perhaps not. You know, if candidate A, and most people in this city know that you can sign up for non-agenda speaker and stand beyond the dais there and announce your candidacy citywide. So, if we're allowing that to occur, then anybody running for office can use that dais and that airtime for the same thing. So, what I'm saying is that we either address it there, or, you know, what control do we have over it?
Ted, you can, hey, boy, you control the
Again, I believe that from a council standpoint, it is your forum. You certainly can attempt to tighten that up further in terms of that issue, both for the purposes of the forum as well as other issues. That would be a determination you all would have to make and make those balances, because we make them all the time. I mean, in all of our discussions with regard to council chambers, there are some balancing issues that have to be addressed, where we come with this particular policy.
See, I'm of the mind that candidate forum, I mean, all of us here participated in candidate forums.
Right.
And personally, I see nothing wrong with a candidate forum in that chamber, if it doesn't impede with the day-to-day activity of the city. I mean, this building is city property. The city is me, you, everybody else here. Candidate forum, at least in our city, is not a Republican or Democratic deal, but it is how we select leadership in this city. So, I have no problem with a candidate forum. It's no cost to the taxpayers per se. Or if it is, we could establish a cleanup fee or utility fee for whoever's hosting that forum. But I just think it's being pretty restrictive for something that's a chamber, you know, it's a council chamber, but we've, once again, we've had like events in there, and I don't think, as far as I know, they've created any problem, any backlash or pushback. Feel free to, wait, wait, ladies.
People have asked for, Elizabeth.
Yeah, Elizabeth.
Have a problem with your name.
Um, first of all, I agree with Mr. Moody. Any of these third-party groups who want to entertain a candidate forum that includes all candidates for whatever the, you know, dog catcher position is, I think that's a perfectly appropriate use of the facility. I am concerned now, because of what you've told us, all of these things, in fact, I just watched one the other night, you know, they're all being videoed, not by the city, I understand that, and I don't ever want our equipment to be used. But if, you know, Suzie and Johnny are sitting in there videoing and running Facebook Live or making a video for YouTube, and it comes out of the Portsmouth Council Chamber with the big seal on the wall, is that a problem?
Let me ask if that's a question to Solomon or Wes.
That's a question to Solomon.
Okay.
I have not dealt with the insignia issue in and of itself. Again, as you all know, I tend to be conservative, and so I, if it's not in the room, you don't have to address that issue. But those same kind of endorsement issues, the seal, the insignia, the incumbent versus the newcomer, those are local government issues that come up over and over again, and the debate and the tension is the city's control over that seal. That's a real issue across the board, is what is that level of control you have over that seal when it's being used in those types of contexts? Because it does blend or bleed over in terms of the issues going forward, you know, both for the good and some would say for the bad, if you're on the others. You know, as they say, it depends on if your ox is getting gored in that particular discussion.
Paul, did I see your hand go up?
Well, any forum, any forum that you have politically, it's basically a false, because most folks know they're going to vote for, most agencies know who they're supporting, and even with that, they have a tendency of being slanted to one group or the other. It's something that we can, that opening up will really, really get us in a pickle, because we know it belongs to the public, and we know that they have a right as the public, but we have policies. We have policies for the jail. We have policies, like Solomon was saying, for each of the offices here. And although it's their right, you see what I'm saying, it's just something that, it's a lot of unintended stress on all parties involved.
Shannon, then Lisa.
Well, you know, I've been listening to the discussion, and, you know, I'm of the belief that we shouldn't allow any political organization to come into our chamber for purposes of a political forum or what have you. When we begin to open up that door, what happens when the organization is diametrically opposed to what any of us believe in, as a value system, when they want to use it? I mean, where do you stop? Where do you put a limitation? And so, political action committees are just that. They're political action committees. Forums support candidates. There are many locations within our city where their folks are very much able to have a forum and do it to whatever level they need to do it. But in my mind, our chamber, of course, it's the people's chamber, but it is not an environment unlike any other environment. And when you start to entertain all of these people and things, and at some point, I was there the other night when they had the political forum, the reality is, what happens if something goes awry in that chamber? What happens if things don't go down the way we had hoped they would go down? There's always a potential for something to happen, and if we use that to conduct our business, we know what we're going to be dealing with. When other folk, we allow other folk to come in there to do whatever they feel they need to do, then they are not conducting our business. And that's my point of view.
And that's my sentiment. I mean, we have some codes here that are set in place, and I think we need to follow them. I was present for the forum as well, and my concern was that when I went over to take care of some of, some business, council business with our city clerk, she was still here. And I asked, "Why are you here at 6:30, 7 o'clock on the night?" And she said, "Somebody has to secure the building." So we have a staff who stay, and I was sleepy as heck in there myself at about 9:15, and here she is, had worked all day and still had to stay here to man the building, and to Councilman Glover's credit, I mean, there was no security, there was no paid security. If someone got upset or angry about anything, it was just an open floor of whatever. And of course, it didn't get rowdy, you know, people were orderly and everything, but my concern was for our city clerk. You know, I mean, are we going to take turns and host the forum and lock up when everybody leaves? The thing is, people using this because it's a free space, because I know, because people have asked us to use my building, and I don't want to be there at 9:30 at night to lock up, you know? So it's a matter of people looking for free use space, you know, where they don't have to be liable for any, anything that could happen. So I think we're crossing a lot of bridges, because I told her to go home, but she had to lock up. Was anybody else in the room willing to stay and lock up to 9:30 that night, or probably 10:00, because they didn't get right out? They had to turn the lights off to make people leave after that. So it could have been 10 o'clock that she would have been here. So I think we have some ordinances, some things in place, and we need to follow that to protect ourselves, to protect our staff, and to protect our facility.
I think that's the issue, that we don't have a policy that's written in place.
Okay.
And so that's why we're having this debate.
Yep.
Dr. Patton.
Mayor, one of the things I was going to say is it pertains to our city clerk. The city clerk holds the council chamber in a very high esteem. She will not leave this building if anyone is in that chamber. We have had the discussions, Ms. White, why don't you, I could say whatever, whatever, and she, her oath, you did take an oath, didn't you?
Yeah.
Her oath that you took is to protect the chamber, and she does it. No one else can stay in this building if there's anyone in that chamber. And I admire her, because that's her, that's her position.
Well, I agree with a lot of comments that were said. I don't think we should have these political events in the chamber. I think it opens us to a lot of other things, just like, yeah, it was said, it was a nice and calm event, but the problem is, is we could have one event, and then you could have people showing up from an opposing group, and it could turn into a real security issue. You know, we have enough security issues as it is without creating some, you know, because now we're dealing, you know, you're going to have to have security in the building. You know, you really need to have a fire marshal in here, because you don't know what size the crowd is. That's who has the authority to tell them, no more people in that room for everybody's safety in case there was an issue. So I think the political stuff, you know, in my opinion, needs to stay out of this building, just like Councilman Glover said, there's a lot of other localities, well, a lot of other locations in this locality where people can hold these events. And, you know, it was brought about in being a political action committee, they had to jump through a lot of hoops to be a political action committee, and that's their point, is having funding, you know, they can afford to do what they need to do at other locations. I just, I think we should stay away from having that in this chamber.
Paul.
I once gave an 87-year-old female, she's a citizen in the city, and all her life she's been a wonderful person, worked for her kids. So one of them approached me, they wanted to use my office to give her a birthday party. And right away, it's yes. So, the day of the party, they came back and said, "Well, you know, my brother was supposed to get the chicken, and they have a gun, but we're still going to have the party." So I got the chicken, and I bought everything for the party. Lovely woman, she was 87 years old. And I had a couple of security people there as well. So they came, they had a wonderful time, no problems. The next day, I had about 30 phone calls. "Hey, tight, you know, my birthday is tomorrow, I mean, next month, you know, my wedding anniversary, and you know, me and you tight, so, you know, I know you're going to look out for me." And I had about 30 folk to call the next day, and I had to just put in a policy, no, no to the public, because it's going to
Escalate.
Well, you did it for him, and you're not going to do it for us. Well, what's that got to do with it? And they want to say, "It's a racial situation." So this is things that we don't have to, you know, involve ourselves with. And that's why I propose that we just use it at the council.
Go to the next and last line. This has been a good debate. I think that it would be useful to put up a list of uses that your chamber has been used for in the past, like a candidate forum, a partisan caucus, and let's say, this one we don't like, this one we don't like, this one we do like. So it's clear, and we have a definitive policy that is on paper, that we all can agree to.
Well, we can't open it up to the public without opening it up to everybody.
And individual council members in the past have used it for different functions. I can think of a couple. One I participated in.
I'm at a loss.
I haven't been to anything like that. But you're a lot older than someone.
So what do you all think about making a list of how the council chambers have been used in the past? And see, now that this has been a good foundation for us to consider that list, to see what's appropriate. You want to do that?
Well, once you get a list, and it's open to the public, who can you deny?
I thought this was the list, council meetings, proclamations by the mayor, and that's it.
Well, I was talking about what events have been held there in the past.
Again, there was a political event that was there Thursday, so that was in the past as well. And what I'm saying again, once we open it up to the public, period, who can we deny?
Well, I'm not advocating, Paul, that we open it up to the public. To me, that's a pretty broad policy right there. I think it's big enough that you can drive a tank through.
But Thursday, we opened it to the public.
And I don't think that was smart.
Oh, right.
And I wasn't there.
Well, when the council person had a party, it was open to the public.
I don't think that's smart.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Anything you do
Party, I wouldn't have liked it.
Anything you do
Put my head over.
That includes the public, that's not council-oriented. It's going to be, you got to open it up for everybody.
No one's in disagreement with you, Paul, but I think it's important that we have a policy that's easily understood. Again, maybe I'm the one that's having problems with the first bullet, because I think it is pretty wide.
The only thing, you know, all of those events, and, you know, we can all discuss a lot of them that happened in the past, and to me, going forward, whether they happened in the past or not, I don't think they're appropriate going forward. I think we should leave all political out of the chamber. You know, I think the chamber should be, as it says, for the council meetings or any other city event, just like when we had the police officer sworn in, or if you had the fire department, you know, like the kids' graduations. If it's a city department within the city, I think that's fine. I just think the outside, you know, they don't need to be using the council chambers for whatever.
Well, the first bullet there, I agree with the mayor, that's broad interpretation. That would open it to birthday parties, because they're not going to impede, impair the city operation, certainly not going to be partisan participation, and they'll, no opposing viewpoints, everybody loves a birthday party.
Yeah.
So I'm going to have a birthday party in the council chambers next Thursday.
Paul could help.
He does, Paul.
Paul's bringing the check.
Paul's bringing the check.
And gets that for $96,000.
Paul said he would cater it, as we all said.
Excuse me. Currently, I, I don't know what the policy is, but I've been to some birthday parties here, and they've been on the floor where the cafeteria is. I think that's the appropriate place to have a birthday party.
I'm just using the first bullet as an example.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
That's a very broad interpretation.
And, of course, once you have that one, add $95,999 to that.
Right. And the fact that we have another one this coming Thursday, I mean, and it's already scheduled, so... Are we voting on something? Is this a proposal for us to make a resolution and vote on this? Or?
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
Not tonight. Because it's still, in my mind, it needs some more fleshing out. For example, to pick up on what somebody just said over here, I think it was Nate, um, a city event, a city operation. I'll give you a case in point. A treasurer who is here, Paige Cherry, is trying to save the city money on real estate back taxes sale. There's no reason why that auction couldn't be in the council chamber.
It's a city department.
If it saves us money, it's a good venue, uh, it's appropriate, it's part of the city operation.
Yes.
And so, things like, we need to find the term, not event, but operation, activity. I don't have the term tonight.
It's, it's, to me, it's just city business. You know, take the public, public out of it. City, it's a city, city form, city business, and that's it. Take the public business out of it.
Right. I agree. I mean, and just like we had, uh, Registrar came in and honored all of the, the pole workers, um, you know, and, yeah.
That city, exactly.
That city, so that was allowed.
Is the chamber still currently being used for the Coast Guard?
What?
No. We have, uh, how often do they come? Couple of times?
Trainings. It's not often at all.
Coast Guard asked, uh, probably a year or more ago, as they filled up their federal building, they were looking for more space for training above and beyond the Colony Theater. And we arranged for them to come and have some meetings in council chamber.
They're military.
Absolutely appropriate. We're a Coast Guard city.
I agree, but that's not city business.
But it's, but it's not public either. It's government, it's a piece of government.
Exactly.
But they're part of, um, military affairs.
And they meet with us here.
Resting debate. What they, what they had was emergency preparedness. And we actually had people there too, from...
They've done a couple of different trainings, but that's government, us.
And what if, what if my Girl Scout troop wants to come and have their, uh...
No.
My more scout group.
Right.
And my baseball team.
We have had those requests, and we have turned them down.
And my soccer team.
We have turned all those types of requests.
And my, uh, math club. Of course, let my spelling club come too.
Spelling bee.
All right. Bill's got the floor.
To the mayor's point, I, I think we need to identify the, some of the past uses. I think Deborah could probably, uh, look back through the annals and, uh, come up with a list. I think before we adopt anything, we need to make sure we're not excluding anyone.
Right.
I'm all right with her coming back.
Another discussion like this, we could probably all go, "No, no."
Yeah.
"Oh, of course, no."
She don't care that many.
Do we have, will you do that, please?
Yeah, that's gonna be tomorrow.
We'll bring this back at the next meeting, not at the next Monday meeting.
But it doesn't make anything, have anything to do with the event that's happening this week?
No.
Not gonna pull the rug out from under somebody on 148 hours.
Right.
And I'd like to add, because this is being videotaped, they did have a security person there that they paid for. Um, it was just one, but they did take the initiative to, they did ask if we were gonna pay for it, and I told them, "No." And they got their own security person. And it was a Porson police officer.
All right.
Okay.
Good debate.
Yes.
Mr. Wright, we'll come forward and, um, update council on three key projects. Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. I'm gonna provide an update of, uh, three or four engineering projects to you tonight, and take whatever questions that you have. First, what I'll start off with is Pavilion. Um, as I mentioned before, the, the mast replacement is complete. Um, the engineering firm for the insurance company has completed their report and their inspection of the old mast. Um, they provided their report to the insurance company, and we're waiting on the results and their decision. Um, the canopy installation is underway. Eight panels have been stretched across the platform. Um, some of them have been partially lifted. Um, the weather is impeding the progress of having those, uh, panels lifted into place. Um, they cannot work in the rain, and the windy conditions that we've had have slowed some of that progress. Um, the goal is to have those eight panels in place by the end of this week. Um, the weather that we're having, most likely won't happen, um, by the end of this week. Um, there's 13, uh, panels that make up the canopy, so additional five panels need to be stretched out on the platform and conditioned, and those panels will be lifted into place. Um, the, the goal is to have all the panels into place, uh, the end of November. Um, we are also in the process completing other work to address some of the deficiencies that we found while we're out there taking, uh, the mast down. And so, the target for the critical items that we found and for site restoration is the end of March.
Oh, that's close.
The end of March. So, they'll work through, they'll work through the process.
All the chairs being...
That's, 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 that's not, that's not the canopy. Those are the other items, though. The electrical issues we found, uh, fixing some of the foundation issues, restoring the concrete, landscaping, so all these other things that we found while we're out there need to be done. Will be done over that time.
What is the end of March?
I'm sorry?
What is the new upgrade that you said in a March?
He said the end of March.
Oh, our end of March.
March, March, the month March.
Chairs being put in.
The ides of March. When, when's the opening, in, in April?
Yeah.
He hasn't said it.
He was shooting for April.
She said shooting for April.
I mean, to, to me, I, I get nervous because it seems like to me, that's, that's a close timetable. And I certainly don't wanna get in a situation that we got into last year. So, how, how can, how can we move that up?
Well, either the critical item, that's, that's the target, have all those critical items complete by the turnover. There, there will be some additional items that aren't critical, but the critical items in the restoration will be complete by that date. So, anything that was identified that says, "These things need to be completed before you open the venue to the public," will be done. Those other items that, that touch up here, that can happen whenever, when it's closed, those are the items that we're not focusing on to get those items done before we turn it back over to the operator.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's ask the city manager to come back with a shorter schedule on these items. Let's see where you can put a fast track on.
Yes, we can do that.
And I'm not trying to be cute, but they built the football stadium for ODU in here, so let's, let's do, let's put this on a fast track.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Paul?
Did I, did I understand you to say that there were other items during an inspection that need to be replaced?
And so, while we're taking the, the mast down...
Yes, sir.
We found a number of other items that need to be addressed before we open the venue, give that venue back to operator for the public, that conditions that aren't, that aren't safe as far as the public being over at that venue, and other things that have the long, the long-term, uh, condition of that facility moving forward that needs to be addressed now.
Did we get a price on that?
We have several prices on that. There are several items. So, those, those items right now are in, in the range of about a million dollars.
You gave us a previous report on these things.
We did. We gave you previous reports on these over the months.
Find that report, send it back out to council, please.
Yeah, we could look for it.
Okay.
One last, one last final question. Once we're all done, I mean, can we, I mean, we need some kind of grand opening, reopen to the renovations or something to, I mean, even if we have to sell tickets for the public to come, I mean, just kinda like, you know, bringing everybody back together. I don't, I don't know if that's part of the plan or something, but we need to have like a reopening, a, a grand reopening or something to invite people back into...
Just don't schedule it for March.
No.
You're asking to bring it back, so we may get it earlier.
Can we get you back, Paul?
I'm gonna be coming back, Mr. Battle, in our November meeting with, um, dealing with the insurance piece and the cost, with some financial, financial pieces we have to cover.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Church and Bridge replacement, um, just a reminder of that project.
Before you leave that, I, I just have a question. So, based on what you said, we have to replace the chairs, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, I, I'm just curious as to, when all of this transpired, um, was, was it unreasonable to expect that we should secure the, the chairs appropriately so we wouldn't have to buy new ones? Or was already a situation that the chairs had been damaged, or the, the elements had, had affected the chairs so significantly, they were beyond that, 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 that?
So, the chairs weren't damaged by construction. Chairs, they've been out there for 20 years, and, um, they've deteriorated to the, to the point that we found while we're out there. Just happened upon it that they need to be replaced. Um, they're not single chairs, they're attached. So, um, in that row, so there are 20 chairs in a row, five of them are damaged, the whole row has to come out.
Okay.
And so, through that, so there, there are about over 2,000 chairs out there, about 700, 800 of those chairs are damaged. And so, as you go...
I just wanted to understand the process.
We don't want those half-blue ones, half-green.
No, no, no. And, and, and I'm fine with that.
They are all attached.
Right. 20 years of sitting out in the elements, it's not reasonable to expect.
We'll bring back the pictures which were shown of the chairs and the, um, they were metal, all of the, you touched them and they fell over.
So, what Dr. Patton is describing, so the chairs have the, the, the metal, the metal, uh, the legs that attach to the concrete decking.
They're more like seats than chairs.
Yeah, they're seats.
They're stadium seats, they're stadium seats. And so, as we, we saw some rust spots, and so as we poked the rust spots, our fingers were able to poke through the, the bottom of a number of the chairs out there, so.
So, that's why I wanted to rebrand it as a re-grand opening, kind of like we renovated the whole place and invite the public back in to see.
The important thing is for Dr. Patton to bring back a short schedule for us, right?
That's what I will work toward, to get back to you, maybe tomorrow.
And, literally, we have seats and chairs because there are some chairs that you, you hold up and store.
Those have been replaced previously, so those aren't, don't want them to be replaced.
All right, so it's the seats.
Okay. Thanks, man.
Let's get back to the Church and Bridge.
Okay, Church and Bridge replacement. Um, so just a reminder of what the project is. It's the rehabilitation of the southbound lanes, um, that are coming into town from Churchland, uh, replacement of the northbound lanes that are heading to Churchland. Um, and the replacement of the northbound lanes actually includes a separated shared use path. Um, that project was bid out in August. Um, we just issued the notice of intent to re-mort, to be, to be a little bidder. Um, I will mention that this project had a 9% MWBE goal that was met by the prime contractor.
Great.
Um, so, right now, where we stand is we have to complete the approval process with VDOT because it does have state funding on it, and then get through the execution of the contract. Um, and then, once that occurs, we have to go through the submittal process for some, for materials, shop drawings, so that the prime contractor can get with his vendors, order materials, and get things going. So, we're looking at mobilization sometime in March or April. Um, because of the permit conditions, um, the contractors in the bid process ask for additional time because, um, the waters that we have, the Elizabeth River, there's an Atlantic sturgeon, um, so it's, and so it's a window that they can't do certain work. And so, it's actually, instead of a two, two-year project, it's gonna be just over two and a half years.
What did you say? It's an Atlantic what?
Atlantic sturgeon.
It's a fish.
It's a fish.
I hadn't seen that on the History Channel.
Say that again. A fish is gonna be in the water that they can't deserve the fish.
Well, it's kinda like Cranny Island when the birds are there. They're protected.
It's their spawning season, they're protected, so certain work can occur.
And that period is how long, Mr. Wright?
It's a few months. So, there's certain things that they can't do in the water doing that, so they're gonna have to hit limits of production.
I don't want Councilman Clark to arrest you.
You mess with a sturgeon, I'm gonna show.
So, you all would be monitoring.
All right, just continue.
Okay, um, seawall replacement. Um, we have three sections that are complete. Um, the section along Crawford Bay, section adjacent to Admiral's Landing and the Renaissance, and the section from High Street Inlet to the Marina. We have three sections remaining that need to be replaced. Um, the section that's adjacent to the Harbor Tower, the former Holiday Inn, the, the section right there at the north inlet, and there's a small section near the Flagpole Peninsula. Um, the plans for the Holiday Inn section and the north inlet are complete. Um, we plan to advertise the, the Holiday Inn section, which is a more critical section, towards the end of this month. However, we're still reviewing the specifications to address the riprap that runs along the entire toe of that seawall, and we're also looking at specifications as they pertain to, um, excavation in the backfill behind the seawall as much as we're comfortable. But those two spec sections, we'll, we'll plan to get that advertisement out. Um, that'll likely start to, after the first of the year, and that's a 12 to 16 months for construction, and it is currently funded. And the current CIP, um, fund for the north inlet, I need to request it for the upcoming budget. Um, we are coordinating the replacement and how that section's gonna be replaced, how that's gonna look. It's the HRT project, so it's a redo in Ferryland, that's High Street Landing and, and the north inlet. And, um, during the enrollment, till we can get that advertised, if there are any issues that happen with the decking in the north inlet, we'll work with property management to address those deficiencies with that.
Questions? I would say, on that decking, we should try to keep it open as much as possible as opposed to closed. And it's closed now?
It's closed temporarily. So, what typically happens is, um, properties management finds an unsafe condition, they close it, then they determine if they can fix it. If they cannot fix it, then they come to us, and we get with the contractor, we get it taken care of. And so, we're in that process of now determining if it's within their capabilities to fix it versus getting a contractor to do it. That's where we stand with that right now.
All right.
Um, and just as a general update, um, just about Portside, um, we're working on a rendering that shows how that tent structure will look on the site, and how it will look with Bill Dill will be open for food trucks. So, we'll come back with the rendering showing the tent, people and food trucks on Bill Dill Street, along with the cost, uh, for that tent and then structure there.
But we know what size of tent. It'll be a 30 by 90.
It's 30, 30, 30 by 60, or 30 by 90. We're looking at both options, and it'll be a blue and white tent.
Right, with chairs and tables that are available for people.
And for seasonal, seasonal use, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you gonna tell us about the last, um, project under, and all down, the last section?
That would be Mr. Mayor. We'll get that back to him. He, he's not Public Utilities.
Right.
All right, I'll get that, I'll get that, Jim.
Got it.
Any update on the sale?
You gotta circle us out? I don't have a current.
Not at this time. What I am trying to do, um, is get a meeting with, um, Tim Faulkner because we're gonna be coming back to you all with a, another kind of recommendation for the, where the circle of sale is.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, we may be able to bring it back tomorrow, just for your consideration.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
That ends presentations, Mayor.
Uh, do we have any, yes, sir.
Yeah, so Mayor, I did have something that I did wanna bring up. I know that we, we have something on the table, which was a, a, something that was gonna be brought back before us with the retirement, uh, issue that was tabled. I just wanted to give some background, a little bit on the current retirement, after we had, the current state of the retirement, after we had our retirement board meeting on October the 10th. after we had our retirement board meeting on October the 10th. Before I go into the handout that I gave you, there are a couple of things that we have to keep in mind, is that currently, we're spending about $10.9 million as a pension obligation bond debt service, and in addition to that, about $8.3 million as an annual required contribution to make sure that our retirement plan for police and fire supplemental is solvent. It's critically important that the citizens understand that this is an obligation, that the city is bound by, and that we must do what's in the best interest of ensuring that that plan is solvent. With that said, I just wanted to kind of update you all. If you look at the sheet that I handed out, the summary of points, actively in each plan, the fire and police plan, we have 14, in the supplemental, we have 14. vested, terminated, that means that someone who worked in the police and fire or supplemental with the city, who left the city for whatever reason, and has not drawn any benefit. So that's what vested, terminated means. In the police and fire, we have 42, in the supplemental, we have 10. The N-Pay, those are folks that are actually receiving benefits in those, both systems, 641 in the police and fire, 358 in the supplemental, and you can see what the totals are. The actuarial accrued liability, 2019, and this is up to the end of June of this year, the crude liability is $239 million, 271,429. That's the amount of money, our liability, to pay out all the participants in the retirement plan. As you see, the supplemental is correspondingly so. The actuarial value of our assets is 162 million, and that's in the police and fire, and in the supplemental, it's 54 million, which leads us to the funded status, year-to-date funded status, of our police and fire of about 67.86 percent, and for the supplemental, 71.14 percent. Now, the unfunded liability that we have is 76,902,943, and in the supplemental, it is 22,272,471. Keep in mind that the projected, where we ideally needed to be in terms of when we borrowed back in, I think, 2013, the $168 million, to shore up the retirement was 80 percent funded. That's the benchmark in terms of our funded. So you can, you can measure that against 67.86 funded in the police and fire today and 71 in the supplemental. We are not there yet, and we have a ways to go. This doesn't include, however, the $9 million or close to $9 million from the refinance of the pension obligation bonds, which we determined that we approved to be reinvested into the plans, retirement plans. Again, the goal is the 80 percent. And so, in the interest of transparency, I want to say that Councilman Moody and I met with some of the representatives of the retirement, police and fire retirement, and we discussed the language that was proposed in terms of those individuals coming before council and asking for a supplement or having a supplement considered. You all have seen the current language. I had made a request of council to ask our city attorney to add some additional language to include our position on not really adding anything additional in terms of paying out until we met the 80 percent goal. As I understand it, what we're talking about today and what we're going to discuss is, with the recommended language, it doesn't prevent the retirees from coming forward. However, there is the caveat that we believe that we need to be disciplined about how we proceed forward, and I will say again, it is our responsibility to make sure that those funds are available, not just for everybody who is receiving benefits today, but for everybody who will receive benefits until that plan, they receive their total benefits and that plan is closed. So that's what I wanted to communicate. I wanted to make sure that everyone had information, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Bill, and then Paul, and then I'll wrap it up.
I think one aspect of the meeting that my colleague mentioned was that I think there's an agreement that we do have a fiduciary responsibility, and I think the retirees certainly acknowledge the fact that we need to look down the road as well to the retirees that will retire in the years coming. With that said, this agenda item 19 point dash 351 that we tabled on the 24th, the language in that, I feel, is mean-spirited. I think it removes the responsibility, it's almost like this council would be shirking its responsibility and moving it to staff when that responsibility lies with us. So I think we should remove that agenda item and don't codify that language, because that language handcuffs this council. Also, it puts a target on the back of the current retirees that shouldn't be there. We all know, and we've all acknowledged, that the goal is 80 percent. So that lies with this council. I don't think we need to be mean-spirited by doing a knee-jerk rewrite of this code. I think we should remove it from consideration, and I would like, Mayor, at appropriate time this evening, we ask for consensus on whether to do that or not.
Well, it's on the table, Bill. In order to consider any action, we'll have to have a motion to bring it off the table. And if we bring it off the table, if we bring it off the table, then we can entertain the next motion. And that motion could be adopt, it could be to pass it by, it could be anything. But it's not before us tonight, it's going to be before us tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
And while we're talking, in order for us to consider it, we have to have a motion and a second to get it off the table. That motion's got to pass. And then, as chair, I'll entertain the next motion. I'll ask the clerk to read the caption of the ordinance, and then, once we have that caption, then we'll entertain the motion. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Now, let me.
Paul, Lizbeth, you, did you want to speak? Okay.
I'm on a totally different subject.
Okay, Paul.
Well, you're right, Kent Shannon. It's the council's responsibility. And as it being our responsibility, we have to put things in place ourselves to correct it. Things such as, if you're investing for the City of Porchmont, and you can't average 8 percent on our investment, we're going to look at terminating the contract. Or, if you lose this much in a six-month period, we're going to look at possibly terminating the contract and getting someone else. And these are the tools that we have as council to correct the problem. So, we know we have the problem, and we need to bring this issue up as soon as we can for discussion on how to solve the problem. There are a few additions in this schematic or gamut, and that would be, how much do we pay these people? Because if that's in with the total situation here, we're premature in any assessment we make. So we have to know how much we're paying them, and we have to put those fail-safe things in place. So I would urge us to approach this and debate about it as soon as we can.
Nate, you wanted to have a floor?
Well, and I know, just like you said, a motion has to be made to bring it off the table before we do anything. But before that happens, should we have more discussions, like tomorrow in the work sessions, some more discussions before a motion is made to bring it off the table? Because if it comes off the table, then, like you said, there's only a handful of responses that can occur with it. So do we need more discussions in here before we get to that point?
Yes, and we can do that tonight. We can continue to discuss it tonight and take it over to tomorrow. The motion, once it's off the table, could be to adopt the ordinance as it is. It could be a motion to adopt with amendments. It could be a motion to remove it from the agenda. So it's a variety. There's room to make amendments to the language that's proposed. I looked at the language again this evening before I came in, and it's pretty neutral. I mean, I understand and respect what you said, Bill, about being mean-spirited. But I think it's similar to language that one finds in different areas of the state code. Remember, the General Assembly has legislated a form law for the use of their year-end fund balance. X has got to go into the rainy day fund, and Y's got to go someplace else, and that's automatic. And they did that as a matter of discipline. Now, a future General Assembly can come back and change that, and at least they have a policy for that. And the way the language, and we, as a body, asked the city attorney to come up with this language, felt at that moment that we asked for the language, that was important that we memorialize the policy in the code.
Oh, the difference between having something in the code and council having a policy. You know, having it in the code is going to take it away, the decision-making away from this body in the future. And people elect us to make the decisions, and I don't think that needs to be taken away from this council. That's my opinion.
I understand what you're saying, but a council can amend the code at any point in the future if it finds that, you know, a code is not workable or needs to be amended, just like the majority of us felt that the code needed to be amended in order to make sure that the policy was well-stated and understood.
It's understood.
We really do have a problem here. I mean, these are shocking numbers. It almost takes all the air out of the room when you look at a funding ratio that's not even 68 percent. And after spending or issuing $168 million worth of pension obligation bonds, that keeps us from doing other public projects that are needed? We got to discipline ourselves. When I say discipline, not spank. We need to make sure that going forward, we're doing things that are financially responsible. Paul?
For some reason, we're displaying displaced aggression. The retirees, they haven't done anything. They're innocent in this. But the real problem is the investors. That's the real problem. And when we don't attack the real problem, and then we want to put some language in that wouldn't mean anything if we wanted to give them a stipend, that's displaced aggression. We have to get more aggressive toward our investors, not those innocent retirees that are living, some of them below poverty. We got to get away from that. That's not, they are not, they're innocent. They're going back into their second babyhood. It's the investment situation that we need to point this arrow at.
Now, Paul, I disagree with you, and it's not, it's not a problem with our investments. It's a problem of not having the discipline to not spend money, and not having the discipline to come up with additional money to invest. And we get our money only from one source, and that's the taxpayers. There's no magic about our investments. That's not the issue. We've had experts come in and tell us that, you know, market-wise, we've been performing either at or better than the market.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Well, let's.
We were talking, you and I, you were talking to me.
I'm talking to everybody on council.
Well, you said, Paul, may I say, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, you're erring, you're making a mistake. When you go from 80 percent to 67 percent, there's something wrong with your investment situation.
No, it's not. Shannon.
But one of the things I will say is, after speaking with our financial advisor at length, you know, this is not unusual for municipalities in terms of what they're doing with their retirements. For example, our financial advisor is located in the City of Chicago. Chicago continues to borrow money that they do not have to shore up a retirement that people are living longer, and they're not going to be able to meet the expectation long-term. And we can go and check story after story after story. The reality is, that's what it is. And so, you know, and it's not Shannon saying it. You can go and look at all of the data from many other cities and localities, but what I'm saying is, we as a city, we have done our part in taking care of our retirees. We have, we have done our part. Now, people can call it mean-spirited, they can say all these different things. I get it. My mother lives on $1,000 a month. It is what it is. And all we can do is, and this council, before I came here, just understanding this stuff, folks have made a commitment to our retirees, over and above, to the tune of $2.5 million year-to-date. That's real, Paul.
Well.
That's, that's, that's real.
But also, whether you put money in every week, if you're not getting a good yield on your investment, you're not going to meet expectations. That's, that's one of the major problems we're having. And I understand you, folk telling you things, and folk will tell us anything. If you're a PE major and I'm a banking major, I can tell you anything. And if you're going to believe anything I say, then we're erring, or if I'm going to believe anything that I'm told. This is language. This is language of which, throughout the ages, has been written, written, and is foolproof. You have to demand a certain amount on $230,000,000. You have to. In the biggest boom the likes of this country has never seen, we're doing this. There's something wrong here. This is a major problem.
Paul, we recognize it as being a major problem, and that's why it's, the facts do not support your position that it's the investments. And you're entitled to your opinion, but the reason... but the presentations that we have been given show exactly what the problem is. Is that one, we haven't had the spending discipline, nor are we recognizing the fact that people are living longer. And when they live longer, they create a bigger liability. That's what rose the liability. These are closed systems. It's not additional people coming into it. And I wish the retirees got more money. But, you know, we have to balance our resources against our needs.
But that's not what I'm saying. Yes, I wish they would get more money too. But that's not what I'm saying here. And I'm gonna yield. I've done my best.
Thank you. I can appreciate the dialogue that we've had here tonight. And I said that is exactly what I would do. Of course, I know you all have been flooded with emails as I have been today and calls from some retirees. But I think we were elected to govern. I understand we need to get to an 80% and we need to do, you know, what we need to do with that. But I don't think we need to target one particular group to do that. I don't know how we get there, but that's why we're elected. That's why we have a city manager. That's why we have staff to take a look at those things. Our financial situation is not gonna change overnight, but we need to look at it. I don't think we need to strap our hands and their hands by them not being able to come and to just request. And of course, Councilman Glover said that it doesn't prevent them from requesting. But I think that, you know, maybe some amendments to how we look at this. You know, I'm not saying just scrap it and don't do it altogether because that won't be our fiduciary responsibility to try to get to 80%. But I think we need to look at another way that we do that by not just allowing our retirees to not be able to come back to us and ask the question or to inquire if our financial situations change.
I appreciate what you just said, but this does not limit them from coming back to us at any time, whether it's in a meeting or individual. This does not take away their First Amendment right at all.
You know, one of the points that Councilman Moody brought up was about the difference between the code and a policy. And that's a very valid point. You know, unfortunately, you know, everybody sitting at this table, you can't tell everybody yes. There has to be no's because that's what benefits the city. And I understand the points that, you know, if you change the code, then that takes your voice away. And what has happened, you know, continually, and it's not just one group, it's several groups, but the makeup of the council changes. And it potentially changes every two years. And so, special interest groups, a lot of times, pull onto the new people because they don't know the history and what's been done in the past. But, I mean, you know, it's our responsibility to educate ourselves of where we are. You know, the primary focus is this fund. We need to work on shoring up this fund to last, you know, for the last individual, for the youngest individual, whether it's an individual, former employee, spouse, or whatever. So, that's our priority. You know, but it's up to us when people ask. And it doesn't matter if it's retirees, certain departments, schools, whatever. We have to make the tough choice. We're not unlimited on funds. So, everybody at this table has to be able to say no sometimes. And I think that's an issue with ourselves that we need to do. And, you know, as council changes, you know, the new members, as they come in, you know, need to be shown some of the history of what's happened. Because just like Councilman Glover, you know, spoke to the, it's excess of $2.5 million because the one that's coming out November 1st will be the fifth time since February of 2017. The first four were $500 apiece, and this one's $600. So, it's an excess of $2.6 million. And, you know, like last year, you know, we gave the extra funding to the schools because the teachers deserve to raise. But, you know, we're not making money. You know, we don't have a printing press downtown. So, you know, this issue, we, like Shannon said, we need to be disciplined. We need to make wise decisions because it affects the entire city, not just one group.
Thank you. Let me make sure that everybody's got their chance. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I wanna be clear, particularly for the public, that the 67.8% and the 71.14% of funding level does not mean that we have lost money in our investments. What it means is that as people are living longer, the bar is being set higher and higher. And so, the same amount of money, even growing money in our investments, isn't as large of a percentage as the bar gets raised. I think it's, you know, I've been here almost 15 years. And this is not a new issue. It's a better issue now than it was before we sold the pension obligation bonds. But we gotta do this for 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, when most of us are all gone, there isn't gonna be a pension fund. We've just got to do this. Whether it's ordinance, we pinky swear, whatever it is, we gotta get to 80%.
Mayor, could I just add this to what she was saying? One of the things, if you look at this last proposal we just had on the 10th, when they came to talk to us. So, our investment, for example, on one of our investments, the benchmark, as you all know, is 7.25%. That's not the benchmark that we set. That's an industry-wide benchmark. Of course, we don't always hit it. A lot of folks don't always hit it. But that's the benchmark and from which they measure the success. Last year, well, this past fiscal year, and in June 30, on one of our investments, we ended up doing 4.3%. Now, remember, it's benchmarked off the 7.25%. So, realistically, you probably won't hit that 7.25% all the time. It'll be lower. And as to Councilman Battle's point, these are good times, right? What happens when the times are not so good?
Go get some batteries.
I mean, if I may. 2018 was a good year if it only had three quarters. Everybody was doing well until the fourth quarter. The fourth quarter put it in the tank for everybody. And so, everybody that's in the stock market, it seems like it's a good time, but it can go south. And if the market goes south, these numbers get really pathetic.
Fast.
Well, it's a couple of things. At the meeting that we had with some of the retirees, it was mentioned, and I think I brought it up and we had a discussion on it. We talk about 80%, but we haven't seen any plan on what that 80% is gonna look like in future years. I think in this day and age, I think our finance department could come back and show us, how are we gonna achieve that? You know, we talk about investments. There's only two ways. City contribution and the money that investments are gonna generate. Only two ways. So, I think it'd be good if we see a timeline, if you may, on how we're gonna achieve that 80%. We can certainly project out what the stock market's gonna do based on the recent history. But at least it gives us a picture. I think we're giving the public the false premise that by changing this ordinance, that somehow that's what's been missing. That's not even a small piece of closing the gap. To me, and I go back, you're right, Mayor. They still have their First Amendment rights. It's a lot easier for me to sit up there and say, "Mr. Retiree, I can't do this. This is in the code. I can't, we're bound by the city code." You know, we need to man and woman up and say, "Okay, this is where we are. There's not money to do it this year, so we can't do it." Instead, shirk in our responsibility as elected officials and fall in back the cowardly way and say, "What's in the code? We can't do it." So, that's why I'm opposed to it. I think everybody at this table certainly owns up to the fact that 67% and 80%, we're a long ways from where we were when we borrowed the money. So, the language has gotta change drastically where the retirees, we're not pointing them to a code that we're the ones responsible for closing the gap on it, not the retirees.
That's a very good point, Bill. But we're saying that we have spent $2.6 million. And from a fiduciary, responsible position, that $2.6 million should have gone into the corpus. And yet, we gave it to the retirees.
Well, next year, you can say no.
We don't have a good track record of saying no.
Well, the voters can change that. If that number keeps going south, then that is our responsibility. And we have ownership of it. Instead of pointing to a code saying that our hands are tied, we can't do it because of a code.
Dr. Patton, how long will it take to get me the figures on what we pay each of the investment groups yearly?
I would yield to the retirement board and your representatives.
Just, can you get the data for him? That's what he's asking.
What are you asking for, Mr. Battle?
The management for the, that is charged by the, is that what you're asking for?
Yes. I yield to everything else. I was telling the mayor that I yield to everything else, but I wanted those figures.
Mayor, could I also make just one last request? And I would request that, to the city manager, that we ask our financial advisor to return, to present to us at our next meeting in November, the actuarial review as we had requested.
And that's the retirement advisor?
Yes, the retirement advisor.
The presenter? Go give them the two dates because they came out of Chicago?
Yes, ma'am.
And see which one that they could come back. Either the 11th or the 12th.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Yes, sir.
How about my suggestion of staff working on a timeline to close the gap on the 80%?
I think it's a very good suggestion. Everybody okay with that?
I don't have any objection.
That way, we can track our success or lack of.
So that we don't end up eating ourselves up. Remember where we were in 2012. In 2012, we were 28% and 32%. And the corpus was about, it was less than $100 million. And we did something bold. And that is effectively, the city council at that time issued pension obligation bonds, the only locality in the state of Virginia, one of a handful nationwide to shore up the system. And for a moment, we had it at 80%. And that is the goal. The goal, of course, is to get to 100%. Because as Nate said, when that last person that's receiving benefits is still alive, we need to be able to pay that person. So, this city has done quite a bit. It's done some innovative things. I don't think that solving the gap between 67% and 74% of whatever the numbers are, 71, that's even worse, can be done by another pension obligation bond issue. It could be done by putting chunks of cash in there.
Yeah, big chunks on. The question was asked, did we have $60 million that we could put in it? And that was last year.
But that becomes questions about, do you spend it on X or do you spend it on Y?
Exactly.
$60 million.
I've never even entertained anything of the sort of putting $60 million in it because I know there's other ways to do it through investing.
Okay. Nate, you want a more discussion on this?
No, we can talk some more tomorrow. We don't have to stay here all night.
Are we talked out tonight?
No, I mean, everybody's making valid points. And, you know, some of it, I really need to digest some of people's comments and think about some of the stuff.
All right. We have on our agenda tomorrow night shared mobility update. That's the scooter ordinance update. Then your report backs, then our reports. It appears that we have room on the agenda to put this item. We'll have a continuance of the discussion tomorrow evening. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Sure.
All right. What else?
All right. On a much, much, much lighter note, for about a decade now, this city council has worn in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month and our sisters and family members who have succumbed to the disease. When the Portsmouth Fire Department started selling breast cancer awareness shirts and sweatshirts, we started buying them and wearing them on the last meeting, during the last meeting in October. So, some of us have several pink sweatshirts. And then last year, they came out with navy blue ones with pink writing on them instead. When the city clerk came, looked into getting new sweatshirts so we could do that again for Councilman Glover and Councilman Battle, they're not selling them anymore this year. However, and she suggested we all wear pink. However, if you two gentlemen are interested, I brought two pink sweatshirts, one for each of you, that you may borrow to wear tomorrow night because I have several.
So, are we dressing down tomorrow night?
Yeah, you could wear a white shirt and tie. And one of these has a zipper and one's a regular sweatshirt.
Oh, well, give me the zipper.
And there's, oh, you're not buying it. You're just borrowing it.
You can wear. Rattle feet. You're not restricted to your sweatshirt. You can wear any pink item you feel.
Wear any pink you want.
Thank you.
Are we gonna be uniform? Everybody's gonna wear a sweatshirt?
You all have your select shirts on.
I have the blue one from last year, but I've never had a pink one.
I didn't get a pink one either.
Or the pink one, I don't know.
Mayor, you got a little pink one?
I got the blue one too.
You all never got the pink ones?
No.
I might have, I'll find something. I might have a little pink T-shirt, but I'll find something. I'll be pink one way at all. Count on that.
And I just watched them yesterday.
I don't worry about that.
I wear some pink. He doesn't.
With pink on it.
Yeah, but I might have, I have to go back and look at my files. I might have a T-shirt from prior to that.
Don't mean to mess up everybody's wardrobe. I'm just trying to keep everybody together.
And I appreciate that.
Sweatshirt, I'd probably pass out in here, so.
Even have a pink bag.
Yeah.
All right. Think is the attire tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, think further. This meeting is adjourned. We'll compete tomorrow.